All right, we'll call to order the Oxford Planning Board meeting for Monday, August 22. Start out by reading the recording notice. In addition, tonight's video recording on Oxford Cable Access pursuant to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Those making a recording must inform the Chair if possible. Have individuals on there. I'm supposed to read that part. All attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Anybody recording besides that young lady over there? Awesome. It being seven o'clock, there is, there are no plans not requiring subdivision approval, so we'll, why don't we go to do some minutes?
Sure.
Approve some minutes while we're waiting until 7:05. And I don't have them.
Yeah, they're in here. To be signed.
For signature.
Anyway, I, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 11th, 2022.
I'll make, I'll second that.
Motion made by Rich, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? Call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Abstain.
Aye.
All right. Carried with one abstention. Those are for the June 27th meeting.
I thought that was July 11th.
July 11th.
That's what I meant. July 11th. Yeah. Now, it's their motion for the June 27th.
Well, I just want to make sure everyone read it, because she, she just sent them my email.
Just got it, yeah, I saw it.
I just want to make sure that you guys are comfortable.
I'm fine.
Did we all get a chance to read it?
Yeah.
Did you get a chance?
I did.
Okay, excellent.
I'm abstaining.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes of June 27th, 2022.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Rich, seconded by Jeff. Any more discussion? I'll, call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, I haven't read it.
Carried with two abstentions. Thank you. What else have we got? Close enough.
Yeah, you're fine.
All right.
It's within two.
Yeah. Anything you want to throw out there for a couple of minutes, Tony?
You have a submission on there for 36 Sullivan.
Oh, for Sullivan, yeah.
It's an application for a special permit for an in-law apartment within an existing single-family dwelling.
Okay.
Everything's current on that?
Yes, yes.
Everything is in order?
Yes.
Okay. Did everybody hear that? Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
To submit, to accept the submission?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion that we accept this plan.
Second.
We gotta schedule a public hearing.
We gotta schedule for...
So I would, I would recommend September 12th, 7:15.
Okay, so for September 12th at 7:15.
Okay, a motion made by Jeff, seconded by, by Rich. Any more discussion? I'll, I'll call for the vote. I'll vote aye.
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 Chris?
Chris.
Oh, aye, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, it being 7:05, we have a public hearing for 23 Lovett Road. Application for stormwater management and land disturbance permits. Applicant and owner is Mr. Dem...
Lots of letters.
Mr. Demopolis, that was bad, and Gina Gingerelli. That one I can do.
Yeah.
Maybe.
We'll go with one of them.
Construction of a new single-family home with associated site work and drainage. Action date, September 14th, 2022. You want to come on up? Just want to state your name and address and give us a little idea of what you're planning.
Yeah, is it okay? We're here. Oh, okay.
You got, just got to say your name for the record.
Hi. I'm Triandavus Demopolis, so I go by Phil.
Phil? You go by Phil?
I have to go last week.
Okay, that's much better.
Not fair. That is not fair.
Remember that. And you're Gina?
I'm Gina Gingerelli, yep.
So we're building a home, obviously?
Yeah, we intend to build a single-family home. I had a conversation with this gentleman this past week. The board put it out for peer review. I wasn't aware of that when I came in. I submitted a check, so I think he said that the peer review, he would have a letter prepared for August 31st.
He, actually, Tony said to me 20, 24th. Is that October 24th?
Well, he'd like to extend the...
August 31st.
Oh, you want to extend it to August 31st?
No, no, no.
The peer, the gentleman from...
And that'll be our first meeting in September, that we can have.
September, September 25th.
Yes, the, the engineer from the peer review...
Yep.
...stated that he would have his letter of recommendation of what needs to be done there for August 31st, from my understanding.
Okay, which is okay.
Which is tomorrow. August or September?
August.
He will have it ready for August 31st.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
And our first meeting in September is on the 12th?
Yes.
September 12th. So we will, we will be re-reviewing that. Staff will review it, and then we'll review it during our meeting at that time.
I was on...
The only, the only issue is that action date, yeah.
Yeah.
We probably want to extend that action date.
Past the 12th.
Oh, we have a letter, right?
October 14th, yeah.
Do we have a letter to extend it?
So I prepared a form for extension.
Yeah.
If the board wishes to do so.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea, because you only, you only have two days. Yeah.
We have more than...
No, 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 the action date is September 14th, but we won't meet till the 12th.
The filing problems we had caused a big loss of time for us to react to the submission.
I see, so, because I'm unfamiliar with the, with the process.
Yeah, yeah, all we gotta do is, we gotta ask you for like a 30-day extension.
That's not gonna...
What'd you do, what'd you put on there?
So Tony, Tony, so Tony's proposing to extend the action date, which really doesn't mean anything. Just, it gives us extra time, which we probably won't use, to October 24th. If something happens, we won't go that long. But we're just giving ourselves a little cushion.
Yeah.
Not a big deal. As soon...
Review what the peer reviews...
Right.
Only because we don't see you till the 12th, and the action date is the 14th. It's only two days, so if there's some little thing that's not right on the plan, something like that.
If we don't have a quorum...
Yeah, or quorum, yeah.
We can't accomplish what you want, and we're just protecting the town.
Right.
Yeah, that's all. Still, just to clarify.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if the letter's prepared the 31st of this month...
Yeah.
And the action date is the 12th, you, you won't see it before the meeting, is what, you won't see the letter from...
All right, we want to extend our action date to October 24th.
But we don't meet till the 12th of September.
Right.
The letter will be here.
We gotta open this public hearing to accept that letter.
Okay, so you have to accept the letter before you can actually review the information?
No, it'll get reviewed by staff and that, and it'll get back to your engineer if there's issues.
Okay.
Okay. It'll be up to you to push your engineer to get all corrections that our peer reviewer may pick up on, addressed by the 12th.
Okay, so there may be revisions that we have to submit.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully not, but there might be.
Yeah, hopefully.
So this just gives us a little cushion.
Okay.
So if you could, if you don't mind signing that?
Down the bar. Just down for short request.
And we're gonna, we're good.
Not September 12th?
Well, yeah.
No, we're meeting on the 12th.
Yes, but there's another meeting in September.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, he's gonna, we're gonna meet, we're gonna extend this to the 12th, I believe. What'd you put on there, the 12th?
Well, this says October 14th.
No, extend it to the October.
They're just giving us extra time.
Keep going down.
As soon as we get the letter from Graves and you're all set, we'll get right into it. Probably, what, the second week of September? Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anywhere here?
There's a little X down the bottom. Thank you, sir.
So we really don't have anything else to discuss on it, right?
No, I wanted to just make sure anyone from the public here in this...
Continue.
Okay, is there anybody from the public, have a seat. Is there anyone from the public here to speak about this project? Excellent.
Let's continue.
So...
All right, what's it, yeah, he's got, it makes sense, September 12th at 7:20. So read it, just read this as he's written everything down there, and we'll, we'll accept that.
Yeah.
Extension, and it'll...
Okay, we have an extension of the action date to October 24th, and also, we'd like to, is a suggestion to extend the public hearing to September 12th at 7:20 PM.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Rich, seconded by Mark. Any more discussion? I'll call for the vote. I vote aye.
I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. All right, so next meeting is September 12th.
We'll see you on the 12th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 150, a public hearing for 150 Federal Hill Road. I'll read the, come on up. I will read the public hearing notice. Pursuant to the provisions of the Oxford Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 3, Subsection 3.9, Apartment Successory In-Law, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 22nd, 7:10 PM, in the second-floor meeting room of the Oxford Town Hall, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass., on a special permit application submitted by Gail Davis to allow for the construction of an occupancy, construction and occupancy of an in-law apartment within the existing single-family dwelling on property located at 150 Federal Hill Road, Oxford, Mass., in the R1 Residential Zoning District owned by Gail T. Davis and Matthew J. Davis by deed, recorded in the Wester Registry of Deeds, Book 64817, Page 167, shown on the access map 15, Parcel C03. Application may be viewed at the Oxford Town Hall in the office of the Town Clerk or the Land Management Department. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at that, at the place, date, and time designated, or submit written comments before the date of the public hearing to the Planning Board at 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass., 1540. See masspublicnotices.org for legal notice. All right, after all that, if you could introduce yourself.
I'm Gail Davis.
And just kind of give us, give us an, give us an idea of what you're planning.
Okay. Well, since my stroke in my right side isn't that great, and I fall down a lot, I thought I might talk to my son, and I put his name on my, on my deed last year when I made my will. And I retired last year from Bay, that, Baybath, so, when I was 70. So I just don't like to be alone in the house, and, because if I fall, I can't get up. So I have a walk-in cellar, and since there's only one bathroom on the main floor, I couldn't really convert that to a handicapped one. So I talked to my son, and they're renting a house in Charlton, and they have two small children, three and one, who are really wonderful. And so I won't have to go drive over and visit them now, because they will live upstairs and, and they have this, he's gonna have his office there, because he works from home.
Yep.
And they have two bedrooms. And I will change one room to a bedroom, but I have to lower the windows, because they're 40, they have to be 44 inches. And so I'm gonna have to, you know, the old, the how they drop and split, they're, I think they're at like 46 inches. So I have to cut them a couple inches down.
Okay.
But the contractor will have to do that. And I'm gonna have to put, they're gonna put a handicap bathroom in for me, which will be really nice, because they won't have to worry about falling every time I take a shower.
Nice.
And I've already got the washer and dryer in, and they're gonna put a sink in for me, and they're gonna put a pump up, you know, to hook it up so that, for the bathroom, because the way this, to get to the septic, it goes that way. And I already talked to the lady in the, what is it, the...
What health?
Rika, is it?
Yeah, Rika in Border Health.
Yeah, that lady, nice lady. And she said that since there's only gonna be three bedrooms, that I don't have to put a new septic in or anything.
Perfect.
Everybody was very nice, this young man, I'm gonna adopt him.
Even him?
Even he was a sweetheart.
Wow.
He's very helpful, yeah. Yeah. I think I'm the same as his parents.
Yeah.
So he's a good kid. And so everybody was very nice, and...
Poor Tony.
I talk too much, so they just want to get rid of me.
No, this is...
Thank you very much.
Thank, yeah, again, everything's being done. You're not doing any additions. Everything's being done.
Interior.
Yeah, this is, this is...
Enough parking?
Oh, yeah, they took, he took the picture of the overhead. I have a long driveway, and it's enough for three guys at the bar.
Yeah, this is...
And I have just under an acre. And I have neighbors that, I was all in this house all by myself. And so it's just gonna be like three adults and two beautiful granddaughters.
Couldn't ask for anything better.
The nice thing about this is you're gonna have your son with you now, and that's a good thing.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be so nice.
Tony, don't forget, Tony.
Well, you know, I don't know...
Heard you adopted him.
Well, you know, I, you know, I wonder, but you know, he's brushing, and you know what? I don't think his parents really want to share him with me. I got married before they did, and I didn't get lucky to, you know, like many years.
Gail, I wish these were all this easy.
You know?
Yeah.
You know, so I'm gonna do everything. It's just, you know, it just, I have to wait for this, because like how long, you said this 20 days after I don't get any complaints, or 20 days after this?
And we file our, our decision.
And wonder, how long does that take?
I don't think it's gonna take long at all, because we're gonna make a decision tonight.
Oh, I love you, thank you.
Okay. We usually deliberate for two or three hours, and then we make a decision, so you'll be home by 12.
Hey, I'll be asleep by then anyway.
So I just have a question. So the 10 by 10 office, so is that currently?
That's a smaller, that was, I used it for a sewing room office myself. It was a bedroom, but you know, when the kids were little, and I was just, and I had a husband, he died.
Sketch of it.
And so I can't complain about any of my health issues, because he never got to see any of the six rooms.
Oh, there it is. Okay. So you're gonna be living in the basement?
Yes.
After all these changes?
Yes, but I'll have a bathroom.
Yeah.
I'll have a kitchenette area.
Yeah.
Okay, and what used to be my huge laundry room area. And then I'll, and the room where the fireplace is, that used to be this huge family room, is gonna be, is split. And I'll have a bedroom area, they're gonna put a closet in.
Yeah.
And then I'll have my living room area. And I'm gonna block off where you come down the stairs from upstairs, because I have a dog, and my daughter-in-law is allergic to animals. And so it has to be, I have to have, I already have a door going through the laundry room, but I have, but my contractor said you have to have a landing at the bottom of the stairs, so I have to have a second door there, so that the dog can't escape and go up the stairs.
And the bulkhead is gonna be...
I don't have a bulkhead, it's a split. It's a walk-in.
It's a split?
Walkout.
Walk-in.
You have a walkout.
Basement.
Yeah, I have a walkout, told me so nice that I'm doing the stairs. You know, unless I go up to visit, but it won't be like running up the stairs all the time.
Yeah.
You know, it'd be so nice.
I'll make a motion to close the public.
Because one of my granddads is three and a half, she can just come right down the stairs. The other one was faster on the stairs than I am, she's 14 months. She was born the night I had my electrical fire.
All right, is there anybody from the public that would like to discuss this project? Okay, there's none.
I'll make a motion to be closed the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Roger. Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Roger. Any more discussion?
No.
There being none, I'll call for the vote. I vote aye.
I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Public hearing is now closed.
I don't have a plan in front of me, but I make a motion...
It's only, it's only a sketch.
Okay.
Yeah, it's only a sketch.
Sketch and nothing, which is okay.
Okay, I, I make a motion we accept this plan for...
For minor site...
For a minor site plan review.
How do you, we're gonna accept the special permit.
Yeah, I'm gonna accept the special permit for an in-law apartment at 150 Federal Hill Road.
Second.
Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Roger. Any discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much. You're all so kind, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Good luck, Gail.
Son will be relieved.
Don't forget to let Tony know that he's kind, too. I mean...
I would kiss him on the cheek.
A young man's statement.
Since I'm the oldest one in the room, I think.
I don't know about that. I don't know about that.
Bye, darling.
Darling. Okay, it being 7:15.
See, I got so, so frightened, so excited.
We have a public hearing for...
So cute.
Tony has that effect on me.
We have a public hearing for 27 Industrial Park Road East. Application for, hold on, Rich, hold on. Application for special permit, site plan review and approval, stormwater management permit, and land disturbance permit. Applicant ZB Battery Development Company, LLC. Owner Mark Hattabeau. Construction of a 8-megawatt AC energy storage system. Action date, September...
9.
November 20th. Is it this one?
This one right here.
This one right here. All right. So I should have a public hearing notice, too, right? All right. While we're setting up, I'll read the public hearing notice. Pursuant to the provisions of Oxford Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 6, Industrial District, Table 3, uses in an industrial district, Chapter 26, Large-Scale Battery Energy Storage Systems, Chapter 15, Site Plan Review, and Chapter... Wow. LXVI, whatever that is. Land Disturbance and Stormwater Management of the Oxford Zoning General Bylaws.
That's a new chapter for this.
New chapter, new, new.
I got a, I got a bone up on my Roman numerals. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 22nd, at 7:15, in the Oxford Down Hall, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass., on applications for a special permit, Chapter 6 and Chapter 26, Site Plan Review, Land Disturbance and Stormwater Management, submitted by ZP Battery Devco, LLC, 10 East Worcester Street, Worcester, Mass., for the construction, installation, and operation of an 8-megawatt AC energy storage system and other electrical equipment at 27 Industrial Park Road East. Property is owned by Mark Hattabeau, PO Box 94 Dudley, Mass., properties in an industrial zoning district. The application may be viewed at the Oxford Town Hall, in the, in the office of the Town Clerk or the Planning Department. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should be, should appear at the place, date, and time designated, or submit written comments before the date of the hearing to the Planning Board at 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass., 1540. See masspublicnotices.org for legal notice. So, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself and give us the synopsis?
Good evening. Tom Corbett with Zero Point Development, representing ZP Battery Devco. And we've got Jack Denager here from Fussin O'Neil.
Civil Engineer for the project.
So I think the best way to go about this, we're waiting for Graves' review. I've brought a check tonight to start that. And he has, Jeff Walsh has that in front of him. I've dropped that off for him to review. So I think I'll just do a quick intro, Zero Point, and then let Jack talk about stormwater, and then we can get into the system a little bit. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So Tom Corbett, Zero Point Development. Zero Point's been doing large-scale solar since about 2011. We started turning away from solar back about three years ago and working towards this energy storage portfolio. We're based out of Worcester, originally from Rutland, and we've got a 30-project portfolio of these energy storage systems throughout the state right now. This particular project here, 27 Industrial Park East, as you stated, Mark Hattabeau owns the property, and this is the north section of the property here, where the system is. The entryway for the site will be to the north side of the property. The entrance to his current building now is just below the site here. But access will come right in, gravel driveway, and they'll be during construction, this is the construction scheme here. So this is showing a tracking pad, but the driveway comes in here to a double gate, fenced-in, complete facility here. Inside the fenced-in area, it's a gravel laydown. There are pads, concrete pads, associated with all the electrical equipment, as well as the battery containers themselves. So we've got a total of six pads here for the energy storage containers. There are two pad, two containers per pad. So the pads are about 13 feet by 30 feet, roughly, and spaced 10 feet where the doors meet each other, and to the gates. From this side here, we've got inverters that tie into the transformers into a recloser. It's typical setup, just like a solar field, and then it connects to the three-phase line at the street via underground cables. So the underground lines actually go down the property line. I have a big old review here. So, this colorful one. Our electrical lines come down back around this backside of the property line, and they actually connect up where the three-phase comes into the property currently. So there'll be pole-mounted equipment per the request of National Grid. We always submit for pads, and they did a request for poles here for some reason or another. So the poles will come down this side of the property, as depicted on the site plan in front of you guys, on a different sheet. Sorry, I don't have that one on, big board. But it will be trench from the last pole at the backside of the driveway, down underground to the recloser inside the site. General stormwater features, just, there's a detention basin here with an overflow. There is a stone trench going around the backside, catches everything coming off that's currently there. And I think they'll let Jack dive into the rest of the stormwater there.
I may try and flip that.
Yeah, go ahead. There's CS 101s there, too, for you.
Just for a little more clarity.
Yeah.
So, yeah, like Tom was saying before, our site access is from Industrial Park Road East up here. You come south to the site, and it's a gated, locked enclosure. You, site entry would be from here. It's all gravel, with the exception of the concrete utility pads that Tom was saying. But for stormwater design, we have a few improvements that we're doing as part of this development. So the first one is this drainage channel here that wraps around the site. The reason why we propose this is to collect the water from the portion of the site that we're not disturbing, and wrap it around our site, so it doesn't flow over the system itself. It'll then go through a culvert end into a level spreader where it'll disperse the flow and continue, like it doesn't exist in conditions, towards the culverts to the northwest of our site here. For the site itself, stormwater runoff that comes down and hits the gravel and the concrete equipment pads, it'll flow over land to one of these two sediment pour bays, which will pretreat the stormwater before going to the main infiltration basin. And the infiltration basin is designed to treat the required water quality volume, as well as the groundwater recharge volume required. And it also mitigates the peak flows through the, for the 2- through 100-year design storm. We have an outlet control structure in the infiltration basin itself, so whatever doesn't infiltrate into the ground will go through that and get discharged to a levels, another level spreader here to the northwest, where that'll disperse the flow towards these culverts in the northwest of the site. So that's the general idea of the stormwater design here. Any questions thus far?
So you have 30 of these currently? Are any of these up and operational yet?
Nothing's operational as of right now. All of these projects are in a study with National Grid, part of their group study that they've roped in all the smart projects from solar into. So these are coming out of the studies currently. Actually, the first few came out of the study last month. And until the end of the year, they'll be trickling out of their individual studies based upon jurisdiction areas.
Okay. And these batteries will be stored on top of the pads? You said two, two-pore pad?
Correct.
And it's outside with the elements or stuff like that?
Yep, yeah, and I can dive into the system design, too. I just, I figured, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, I just, I know, I know, I know nothing about...
Yeah, so they're, yeah, they're a purpose-built NEMA-rated container, and they, they house the energy storage. Actually, I'll just...
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong. It's in, the batteries themselves are in a container.
They're enclosed in, in, yeah, I'm just wondering what kind of containers they are and what...
Yeah, they look like this here. So these containers here. Two-hour fire, fire rating So these containers here, two-hour fire, fire rating wall, outside and internal walls. So the unique part of this system is that it separates the energy into two different isolation areas. So this battery container right here houses the cooling unit, as well as some of the power controls. And these three bays here show battery racks. Each rack has modules, each one of these, there's eight modules in each rack. And there's three racks per isolation area. So you've got coolant, batteries, DC, DC converters, just to keep the power moving and equalized. And then you've got another three racks of batteries here in each container. So you've got a fire rating wall here and here and here.
So these are stored here and then where do they go?
The batteries stay.
The batteries stay, but the electricity goes onto international grid?
Yeah, so the way that this works, the way that we've kind of got here, we've started with SREC one back in two thousand and eight. By two thousand and ten, we had SREC two with solar, which brought in a little bit heavier scale solar. You started seeing some five, ten acre, fifteen acre sites. And then twenty eighteen really till now, we've had the SMART program. And the SMART program was really set forth to have large-scale solar coupled with energy storage. So a lot of, most if not all of the SMART portfolio projects in the state already have batteries on them. We've developed about seventy megawatts worth of batteries with our solar sites currently through SMART programs. And we have another forty megawatts to develop of battery storage with some outstanding projects. The way that that works is the solar's charging that battery on site. And then it distributes it to the grid during peak demand. So while we're at home with our ACs, watching TV, doing laundry, all that stuff, four to nine PM is your peak load time. That's not when solar's online. So the, the mission here is to store that solar energy that's being produced during the day. And later, and later use that energy that's a lower cost, efficient fuel, green. During times of peak demand, instead of buying high-priced energy through the transmission lines from ISO New England. When everybody else is buying it.
And is the shelf life, what's the maintenance, what is the shelf life on these individual batteries or not?
Yeah, so it depends on the way that they're charged and discharged, but the way that National Grid's kind of restricting everything. These, these will charge slow and discharge slow, so life expectancy's roughly twenty-five years. It would say twenty to thirty depending on usage, but by the time twenty years goes by, the battery technology advances so fast. These containers could be upgraded.
Do they diminish in effective uses, like after ten years, is it fifty percent?
Yeah, so your capacity comes down as years go on, just like your cellphone. Take your cellphone, your cellphone's built to last two and a half years, roughly three years for a battery. It's not meant to last longer than that.
They're lithium-ion batteries?
Correct, yeah, it's a lithium-ion battery. The chemistry is a lithium-ion phosphate. It's a solid-state battery. It's not like a nickel-manganese cobalt where it's got a liquid electrolyte.
And is somebody on property all the time or not?
No, it's not manned, it's manned remotely. There's a center, this, yeah, the company that will hold the project long-term and operate it. Will, they have an office out in New York that they currently run, I think over a hundred and thirty megawatts worth of battery energy storages. In New York, Florida and some other places here in Mass.
Is there a maintenance every two months, every one month?
Yeah, maintenance is key with these, really it's torque specs, stuff like that, checking fittings, making sure nothing's leaking out of the coolant system, you know, all that stuff.
Is it done once a month, once a week, once a, once a year?
It depends on the item, but there, there is an operation and maintenance plan included with the submission package, I believe, right? That was in there, yeah.
So I have a couple of questions. So you're, where are you getting the solar to power those up?
Yep, so the way that this works, so about two years ago, the state started looking into a incentive program to get developers to develop projects like these. And that is the Clean Peak Energy Standard. It replaces the SMART, the SMART Portfolio Incentive Program. The Clean Peak Energy Standard headed by the Baker-Polito administration. Set forth goals for the state to reach carbon neutral essentially. So with that, it implements standalone energy storage. And the way that the program is designed, you can qualify for that if you have one, solar plus batteries. And it's a little bit more restrictive than the SMART program for that, or standalone. And there's a couple of different ways that you can qualify as a standalone, and one being co-located. And the other one, charge coincidence. So charge coincidence is meaning that there's a charge window that the program allows from eleven AM. We'll just give it, it's different for each project. So eleven AM to three o'clock in the afternoon is our charge window from the Clean Peak Energy Standard. And then from four to nine PM is our discharge timeframe. So that part of the standard is telling us that we can charge from the solar, because solar's. The electricity in the lines is like water, you pull it out and it's, you put it in, you can pull it out. And what's happening now is there's so much solar concentration on a lot of these three-phase lines, we're losing it through heat. So to charge while solar's on, it's reducing the heat thermal light limits on the line. And also absorbing cheaper cost electricity for later use. So that's how these work. It's further restricted from National Grid, depending on how many systems, what that input is on each individual line. So if there's ten megawatts worth of solar, they might say, we want eight megawatts worth of storage right now. So they'll limit us size-wise as well, as far as what we can put on the line for system size. National Grid's really the ultimate sayer is when we can charge and discharge. They have responsibilities to their constituents to uphold their infrastructure and make sure it does not fall apart and create a brownout. So there are many relay settings, there are many time clock settings, two time clock settings, two separate clocks as assurances. In case of time changes and all that stuff, and if it falls back. So there's a lot of precautions on the National Grid side that go into it in order for it to operate within the standards of the state and the law.
So is the site that this is gonna be on, is it, like, is it just a wooded site right now or has it been previously developed?
Yep, so currently the north side of this property is pretty, pretty well wooded. And also currently, there is, his leach field is currently in this general area. Our goal here is to get an approval on this to then address that before we get into moving that. There is an alternative site on site for, on the premise for a leach field location, which will be dealt with the Board of Health upon approval for relocation.
Okay, so as part of this packet, there's a decommissioning plan? So is that gonna be, like, how do we know that that's appropriate?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so one of the recommendations from staff would be to also do, so we have purely a peer review, to commence tomorrow on the stormwater piece. Given that this is one, a new bylaw, to your point, the decommission plan, the sound study requirement and so on. Staff would recommend that, that the board look at a peer review of, general peer review. And mention this to the applicant as well, so that we can look at this application. And ensure that it's consistent with the bylaw in place. The, have reached out to, to one firm, two firms now. There are engineering reps that have specialties in this area, so just trying to find the right firm to assist us. Would anticipate having a proposal soon, so that's a long answer, but to say that we're requesting that the board require a peer review, so we have the right staff, the right capacity to assess objectively.
That makes sense.
And you said the proponent has no problem with peer review?
No, no, I don't. I, I think it's a great idea, given like we discussed, it's a new bylaw, it's new to you guys as well. And it's, and it's gonna be, I think, a pretty effective way of going through this. I've done, I've permitted eight other projects and some of them have gotten to be a little strenuous. With trying to create an understanding, you know, when you have, when you have a review letter to look at and it kind of connects dots a little bit better. And it's an outside view.
So when do you, so you mentioned, so you have how many of these projects going on, like?
I've got thirty currently that are in with National Grid. These are the first ones with National Grid that they've been looking at as standalone energy storage systems in the state. So right now, they don't have any currently as a standalone unit without solar connected to it. Or without it being on Martha's Vineyard or something.
So when do you anticipate, like, the first one being up and running?
Up and running, so we've got approvals on about six or seven of them now. By the end of the year, I'm guessing we'll be ordering equipment for those. As National Grid actually gives us our final, what they call an ISA, is the Interconnection Service Agreement. Which kind of sets our construction timeline and will kind of set the pace of ordering equipment. But once we order equipment, it's looking like about a nine to twelve-month wait on batteries, inverters, everything right now electrically is just backed up. So I'm thinking spring of twenty-four will probably be actually installing equipment on these first sites. So the goal would be to have all the dirt work done, ready, waiting for these containers to come, put them on site. And up and running, hopefully the tail end of twenty-four.
So to your point though, I mean, you're saying the first several would be coming out. I mean, what number are we at in the thirty, you know, like you have thirty pending?
These will all be very close in construction timeline, very close. So the goal would be to have, be having these all permitted, ready to go. And really just waiting on equipment from this spring till next spring.
How do you know they're all gonna get approved?
I don't.
So you might clear, like you're saying, though, you'd clear the land.
We haven't done anything at the land.
No, 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 I'm just saying, though, if you get the approval, how would that?
I could prep the land.
Yeah, if we got the approval and the approval, yeah, and the approval with the special permit would be two years roughly. And so from there, we'd either have to maybe extend if it became that kind of issue, but we're not foreseeing that being an issue.
Right, but to the point is that you wouldn't clear this until you got approval through National Grid or?
We'll have approval through National Grid by the end of the year. These projects will get, it's not really an approval, it's really a, what can you put here for a project? What's the timeline to connect it? So their approval is really, they're not gonna reject a project, National Grid won't really reject a project unless it won't fit on the line. And the way that these projects work is they're taking stuff off the line, so it's not really needing to fit on a line. So these projects will happen in the National Grid sense. It's just a matter of getting the final Interconnection Service Agreement, which are due back for all of these projects by the end of the year.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank you for choosing Oxford for one of these systems. I think it's great. We have a lot of solar farms in Oxford. And only one has a battery system in it.
Yep.
All the rest have nothing. And I've often wondered, where's all this generated electricity going in the peak time, probably between, you know, ten AM and three PM? Where's all that electricity going? And you answered the question. It's heating up the lines and National Grid is, is seeing the repercussions over that. And I thank God the state finally came out with this, you know, duh, I think we gotta store some of this energy so you can help us out in the peak time and at night.
Right.
Because you're not generating a single kilowatt of electricity at night. I, I, I was wondering when this was ever gonna happen.
Yeah, the only way that renewables work, to depend upon them, to be able to push a button on January night when it's blowing fifty and it's negative twenty. And the electricity is going and you're ordering, and you're getting electricity from ISO New England at high price. And that's through a gas beaker plant. So the only way to do that at night with renewable energy, when it's not being produced, is to push a button on a battery project.
Correct. So I, I'm very pleased with this project, I really am, and I, that's why we pursued the bylaw. And we got it in here, because we saw a definite need. We've got megawatts of solar generation in the town of Oxford. I'm not even talking all the houses that have it now and reversing all their meat is sending electricity out to somewhere. So I didn't know how, I didn't even know how National Grid could even compensate for all that.
So how do you, so like, what's the benefit to your company and to residents?
So this, for our company, it works the same way as it does with solar. It's an incentive program. So these were, and especially with the new infrastructure bill being IDC-eligible. Meaning that we can be in like forward capacity markets as well, to be on-demand for the higher grid structure as well. They could call upon that energy that gets moved through the substations. So essentially, essentially the same way, multipliers, like in SMART program, you had pollinators, stuff like that. There's just incentives through the state for this stuff. And for the town, it'd be the, a pilot program tax, however that gets set up as far as personal property. Typically try to do pilot programs with towns. It's typically more of a benefit to the town to be able to forward think on their capital spending. But that's kind of the, the benefit to the town on that side of things. It can never guarantee a benefit from National Grid. But the incentive, the incentive here is to bring electricity costs down. And you see that coming predominantly through offshore wind right now, off the coast of Martha's Vineyard. There's eighteen hundred megawatts worth of offshore wind being installed. And those are two approved projects that's happening. They're gonna be online by two thousand and twenty-five. And that energy has to go somewhere. So in order for us to move away from carbon-producing energy plants like gas beaker plants or whatever fossil fuel it may be. We have to start shifting things and we have to be okay with shifting things slowly and not really depending on one source. So while we're building offshore wind, while we're building all this solar and creating all this energy storage in the state. To be able to shift all that energy around and utilize it where it needs to be used. We still have to have the gas beaker plants, we still have to have the fossil fuels and the hydro and all this other stuff coming in. So there is a little bit of timeframe where you can't say that it's a hundred percent, like some people will look at it and say, well, are you charging off of coal or whatever fossil fuel? The answer is kind of gray, because you're charging through windows and it's accepted that way through windows. Eventually, the goal is to be charging a hundred percent off of renewables and using only renewable energy in the state. So offshore wind's been pushing that. They're moving forward with Brayton Point, C-Mass, Mystic Power Plant areas. There'll all be probably battery energy storage systems. Getting injected from submarine cable lines from the offshore wind, directly from the ocean into Born, Hyannis. They're going directly into the Mystic through the coast of Boston. So it's pretty interesting what they're doing right now down there. It's kind of paving the way here. The only way that offshore wind, big wind and big solar works is with local infrastructure being able to store energy. We have a lot of outdated old substations in the state that need infrastructure upgrades. And the point of battery storage is to defer infrastructure upgrades by relieving that pressure on the substations and the thermal rating on the lines.
And how, how much electricity will this generate? I know it's a vague question, but how much will it supply? I mean, enough to do the whole town of Worcester County or is it?
I don't have a house per, I don't have like a per-house in my head of, I should probably by this point in time, but I don't.
How many TVs?
I can get that for you. For next time.
This one site, this six, six, twelve batteries?
There's twelve batteries here. It's eight megawatts worth of energy. There's roughly like three-quarters of a meg in each one of these boxes. Which is different than systems that we've seen in the past, which is a good positive note, because you're separating, like I said before, you're separating that energy into different confinement areas. And creating safety fixtures.
Big, small, medium?
This is, I would consider this a medium scale.
Okay.
For what's coming in the state, there is proposed hundred fifty, two hundred, four hundred megawatt sites in the state right now. Out in California, you have a, I think Moss Landing now has like twelve hundred megawatts worth of energy storage on it by the end of the year. Yeah, I believe there's at least eight hundred of it running right now. But it's, it's proposed, I think they just proposed to increase it to twelve hundred, if not eighteen hundred megawatts. Texas, they've got a couple three hundred megawatt systems down there. Predominantly Texas, California, right now you'll see large sites.
And this one's eight, is that?
This is eight, yeah. So different style projects, the bigger hundred, two hundred megawatt projects, they connect to high, high-tension lines, one fifteen KV lines. Versus your thirteen eight out front here on the streets.
Anything else?
To answer your question, a megawatt's about six hundred homes.
Thank you. Per, per megawatt?
Yep.
Okay, if I can do the math.
I thank, thank you. Thank you, Matt.
It's about six hundred homes per megawatt.
So, it's eight times six.
Forty-eight hundred.
I figured even you were even looking at, you were either looking that up or playing Candy Crush. Thankfully, you were looking up that information.
I'm sure you're gonna get that question.
I'm surprised that's the first time and it's in my head. I swear, I swear, it would, it's gonna be in my head now, so.
Stormwater management, um, we approve this, it's ten years from now.
Yeah.
How are the culverts, the spreaders, how, how was all that stuff operating?
Yeah, so, right now, I'm, right now, the drainage channel itself is a hundred-year storm event, um, based on NOAA Atlas fourteen rainfall precipitation. Um, that could subject to go up. I know they're releasing NOAA Atlas, uh, fifteen, I think, in, uh, in the near future. Um, but it, the drainage channel, I mean, for the most part, a lot of regulations will only require like ten or twenty-five-year design storms for hydraulic modeling, so for the drainage channel, and that's mitigating the hundred-year event. Um, and then the infiltration basin.
The point of my question is, is, I'm, the, the plan is the plan. I'm just saying, ten years from now, does the, the site owner, what's their maintenance obligation?
Sure, yeah, we actually have an operation and maintenance plan as part of our stormwater management report that the owner, uh, or operator of the facility will have to adhere to. Um, and it, you know, for the most part, it's making sure nothing clogs up, it's making sure it's mowed and maintained. There are set procedures set forth in the stormwater management report. I forget the exact appendix.
Yeah, it, it, and not to cut you off, um, I just, like, for random timeframes, this is, might not be per the O and M right now. But, so, say you got this, uh, spot right here, like, uh, once a year, it's gonna be blowout leaves, uh, replace riprap when needed every five years, whatever that might be. I don't know, operation and maintenance plan, um, if that's more of your question.
Yeah, it, well, I'm looking at the, um, Fussin' O'Neill Stormwater Management Report. Our long-term operation and maintenance plan, that's, uh, Appendix J.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not in there.
It's not.
I, I couldn't find it.
All right, good. All right, thank you, thank you. I'm not losing my mind.
Actually, my next question.
All right, so, I'd like to see Appendix J, because if we can incorporate that into our approval.
Sure. Um, it's not included in what you have?
I, I couldn't find it.
It might have just been cut off from the document.
Yeah, I think I went online and I'm pretty sure the, what you guys have online, it has it included.
That's where, that's where I'm getting mine.
Oh.
We can square that away for next time.
Yeah.
We'll be back.
We, we do have that and it has kind of procedures in terms.
I always look at this and I always go, oh, that's great, that's great, that's great. And then I say, okay, what's it look like ten years from now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There are procedures for each element of the stormwater system.
It's in this, I don't know, we got this packet a while ago, but it's J, right?
Yeah, so, it's underprinted but not the electronic?
Yeah, so, it's here.
We're just a little light reading.
I think, I think in particular, what I was looking for is, is like timeframes for each thing. You know, we don't wanna wait ten years, find out that there's been a problem for nine of those years and.
Sure, yeah, in terms of the stormwater.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you, when you look at this again, each element has a timeframe. So, I believe, like, the infiltration basin, it's, it's quarterly inspections. So, once every three months for, I mean, for, uh, mowing, I mean, you have to do that as required. Uh, but, yeah, for like the infiltration basin, for sediment buildup, there's set procedures, both timeframes and, uh, visual observations that you can make on it to see if it's being maintained properly.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be surprised if that wasn't in there, because actually, the, the other thing I was looking at is the decommissioning plan and that actually looks pretty good. And it specifies that, like, after five years, they're gonna re, review it and update it, so, so, I thought that was really good.
Yeah, an O and M plan for stormwaters required by the Stormwater Handbook, Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, so.
Anything else? Any other questions?
I just had a quick question on the diagram, the kind of wavy perimeter line there. Is that, that's the area that you're, inside of that is what you're clearing for trees and outside of that is gonna stay as is? Is that?
Correct.
The interpretation?
Yes.
So, right now.
I see, okay.
This is what's going on on the property and this is all orange. Um, at the end of this project, this will now be grass, stormwater features, gravel.
Okay.
Curvaceous, concrete pad.
So, pretty trimmed to the footprint.
It's, yeah, it's basically confined to the maximum extent that we could. It's about, uh, about an acre and a half, sixty thousand square feet, roughly, give or take.
Okay.
Yeah, with the system, we don't really require anything more than like fifteen feet away from the fence. Um, with this, the stormwater features kind of push it out a little bit more. Um, but, yeah, this is pretty typical for this size site with a wooded lot.
Is that a, a concern for the fire department?
I did sit down.
Sure, we'll hear from them.
Yeah, I, I'm still into some discussions with him.
Okay.
Um, I did sit down with an initial meeting with him about a week and a half ago now. Um, so, I've been back and forth with him a couple times.
I mean, they're pretty well inside the facility anyway, but, just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so, for fire purposes. The safety features with the site are pretty extensive, um, as far as fire, fire goes, um, with this fire rating walls, um, as well as each one of these containers has a dry pipe plumbed to it. So, outside of the gate, um, of the site, there'll be a manifold, they got this cheesy little picture to give a somewhat of a depiction, a manifold of pipes like this. Uh, they'll be on a stanchion outside the fence, on the brick wall. Um, but they'll be consistent with the fire department's connections. And there'll be, um, so, there's twelve containers, so there'll be eight pipe connections on this side, eight pipe connections on this side. Each pipe is labeled to the corresponding container, so that in the event that one of these was to have a failure in a cell and it started smoking and it started with a cot on fire, say, um, the fire department can completely flood that if they so see fit.
Okay.
Um, they can apply water via a pump truck or a hydrant, whatever it may be, um, given site and what the fire department and, um, I come up with it for a plan, a mitigation plan for that. Um, so, each one has its own individual pipe, um, so, you're sending water to only one area, um, inside the container. It is set up. Where is my diagram? Well, in each one of these areas, I don't have my mechanical drawing for some reason. Um, there's four sprinkler heads, eight, eight sprinkler heads, sorry, in each one of these, um, isolation areas where the batteries are. Um, and that is, so, when a, when a battery cell short circuits, it starts to heat up. Um, and when a s, battery cell starts to heat up and it gets above, oh, hundred and, oh, two hundred and sixty degrees, I'd say, um, Fahrenheit. All the numbers, the, the things are all Celsius. So, it's, um, once about two hundred and sixty degrees, that cell starts to go into what's called a thermal runaway. Um, the thermal runaway is the fire event. Um, the thermal runaway is the propagation of heat from one cell to another, um, and how fast that happens. There are testings, there are UL certifications that go along with these batteries. These batteries are probably the safest with the Myon batteries, through energy storage cars, stuff like that, not just these. Um, these are the safest batteries that we are around every day. Um, they have a lot more protections built into the cell, the individual tiny cell, not the module itself. Um, there's hundreds of cells that build up one module. There's probably, um, two hundred thousand cells inside each one of these containers, um, that make up this energy storage system. So, when a cell starts to propagate heat, it goes to the next cell, goes to the next cell, goes to the next cell. That's thermal runaway. The only way to stop that and suppress that is to apply cool water, really the only effective way to do that. Um, so, that is why water is the suppression method here, um, with battery storage. Uh, you see that out in New York predominantly right now, dry pipes starting to be mandatory. Um, that correlates with NFPA eight fifty-five. Um, Massachusetts has not adopted NFPA eight fifty-five. Um, it is something that I use as guidelines while we develop these sites, because by the time these projects come online, eight fifty-five is most likely going to be adopted already. Um, dry pipes are included with that, um, fire mitigation plans are included with that, so, um, that's kind of.
But, it's not automatic, though, right? So, the fire department's still, in other words, it's not, it's not a sensor in there that says, okay, these are heating up, let's.
Correct, and that has a lot to do with, so, these containers are liquid cooled versus air cooled.
Yeah.
Um, it's a lot more efficient that way. It creates a lot more stability with the cells and the modules. Um, also creates a lot more room for calculations to, um, artificially manage the system and artificially almost predict faults in the system, um, by a cell heating up so fast. Is it getting hot down here faster and calling for, uh, coolant, cause each individual module has its own.
Cool.
Um, coolant, um, solenoid calling for it and not calling for it. So, it manages this, it's incredible how it manages this whole system. The battery management system on this is.
So, you'd probably pick up on a, on a, on a fault that's causing it to elevate and.
Yeah, before it even gets to a threshold where it's a problem.
Two sixty, maybe by.
Right.
Boiling, two twelve, it's gonna, my God, we're, we're getting too hot here.
We need to cool this one down. It starts to see trends, it starts to correlate that. Um, it's pretty interesting how the battery management system works in these, um, pretty sophisticated stuff.
Any other questions? All right, um, I have a date for, um, oh, we wanna continue the public hearing. I have a date down here for anybody, if you wanna choose that one, um, of October twenty-fourth.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion that we continue this public hearing to October twenty-fourth.
Hold on. I believe it's September.
Oh.
Oh, I wrote October. All right, so.
So, I'll, I'll say, now, I.
Okay, Tony.
So, the, um.
New submissions?
The, uh, for battery storage, we have September twenty-sixth is the meeting. We could do September twelve, but I can't guarantee.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, yeah, no, you're gonna have a hard, you're always gonna have a hard time finding somebody to.
Yeah, so, just. You okay with the second meeting in September?
I am, yeah, I think it's realistic to at least, it, it might not even be, it might even be further out with, with people. I've been trying to contact and.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this public hearing till September twenty-sixth.
At?
At.
So, at this figure, nothing scheduled?
Okay, seven oh five.
Seven oh five.
Seven oh five, sucking up. Motion made by Chris, seconded by Roger. Any discussion? Call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Thank you very much for the info.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
See you guys soon. Oh, uh, what'd you come up with the name Zero Point?
Zero Point, um, I should know this too, right? So, zero point has to do with, um, like, coordinates in, like, the zero point in space. There's, they're all, uh, my boss and most of the employees in the office are all WPI graduates. They all graduated together, so, they're all a young group of guys and they were into that kind of stuff. Zero point, zero point comes from that somewhere down the line.
Great point of, great point of average.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, next up is the, uh, continued public hearing for forty-six, forty-eight and fifty, Harwood Street. Application for special permit and land disturbance permit applicant DJ Enterprises Common Driveway. Serve three lots, action date, September eleventh. Uh, so, we have a request from the owner to continue this to November fourteenth, right?
Yes.
Right, so, November fourteenth.
He's looking, he's looking to, uh, to continue time of action two. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, um, to move the, the action date to.
Have that in writing.
We received an email from him today, um, at four o'clock.
All right, so, we have a motion by Chris.
Sure, I'll make.
Oh, I'm sorry. I imagined that.
I'll do a, a motion that we extend it to.
Send the action date.
To extend the action date to.
November fourteenth, fourteenth.
Fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
He still has to come and assign that right at some point.
We, we received the request via email.
Yeah, we received the request via email.
Yep.
And, um, and I, Mr. Chairman, I don't have that copy in front of me, but I believe you also requested that the public hearing be scheduled for, for the November fourteenth as well.
I just had to continue that he does.
Continue the public hearing to the.
Public hearing to the fourteen.
To the same date?
So.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense, though.
No.
However, the board sees fit.
I think we gotta back that off so that we can get another extension out of him, cause his extension can't be the same day as our meeting.
Yeah, we can't have the extension both on November fourteen.
No.
The public, next public hearing and the action date on the same day, it's not good, however, however you guys see fit.
Why don't we do the?
Continue it to the twenty.
Yeah, go to.
Why don't we just, October, go to Oct, the, uh, first meeting, oh, it's a holiday, but October twenty-fourth.
October twenty-fourth.
And it, so, the first, the first motion was to extend the action date to November fourteen.
And to.
Is there a, do we do?
Continue the public hearing to.
Are you gonna wrap them all together?
Sure.
And conti, and.
That's what's gonna be on the form.
Do you wanna add that to your motion, Chris?
Sure, and I'd like to add to the motion to continue the public hearing for forty-six, forty-eight and fifty, Howard Street to October twenty-fourth at.
Seven oh five.
Seven oh five.
Okay, motion by Chris, seconded by Rich. Any more discussion? All those in favor, I'll call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Thank you. Next up is, uh, action item Kathy's Way, Kathy Way subdivision planning board endorsement of lot re, re, lease form.
Good evening. I, I'd like you on to where all that solar energy was interesting meeting.
Goes in the lines and heats them up.
I know, I just.
That was real, that wasn't, that was.
That was, that was really interesting.
And National Grid is getting fearful that they're gonna have to replace miles and miles of line.
Well, that's, that's how they had the fires in California a few years ago, keeping the lines.
The lines, yeah.
A lot of it was solar.
Okay, so, we have a, we have a release form submitted by you, Mr. Allen, right?
Uh, no, su, I received that from your town planner.
Okay, uh, so, he's requesting to release four, lot four, five, six and seven. Um, and we also, we have this, we have the bond on this property, right?
If I may give you an update, um, the water suppression twenty thousand gallon system has been installed with the required stuff from the fire department. The detention fund is going in as we speak. So, the only big item after that will be the paving of the road. I'm, my intention is to have this subdivision done by the end of this year before the winter comes, so that I can submit it to the, uh, annual May meeting for town acceptance.
Wow.
All of the lots are sold now.
Now, wait a minute, doesn't the town usually like to wait a year after you do your final coat?
I have, well, I don't know how Oxford does it, but, but I have been in other towns that they, they didn't wait.
Okay.
And the engineer was there, was inspected, you know, we've had.
I could be wrong.
Hey, I. Whatever the town of Oxford decides is what we'll do.
So, you're planning on finishing the road soup to nuts, end of the year?
Except for the final coat.
Except for the final coat.
April.
Okay.
Because there'll be, uh, trucks going in and out, cement trucks and.
The town's not gonna accept it.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know how.
I would say it wouldn't until the final coat's done.
Oh, no, I know that, well, the, yes, the final coat.
That's in April, yeah, he said April of next year.
Right. Isn't it annual in May?
May and October.
Yeah.
Right, we have two.
I think so.
Okay, what is the?
I did see some pavement down already.
Oh, 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 yeah, I mean, if, if you look at Graves's, um, report, we have two-thirds of the subdivision all done. With the, with the, uh, retention fund being done. We've ordered the, the bounds, so the bounds will be going in in the next month. Uh, no, the sidewalk, uh, had been laid out and, uh, not all of it, but, but rolled, ready to go for asphalt. We're having a problem with National Grid. I, I know you find that hard to believe, but for a year and a half, I'm trying to get a streetlight pole from them.
Oh, Jesus.
We did all of the underground, uh, work, but we can't get the damn streetlight from them. Uh, and I don't know how to, I, I mean, I've tried everything, everybody I know is retired, so, I've got no.
They want it on the street, right, when you get out from the.
No.
Or at the end?
At the end of the cul-de-sac, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the, I mean, the street is. Yeah, the, the, I mean, the street is owned by you guys, so. So the plan just indicates the end of the cul-de-sac, the s- street light. So three of the lots have been, uh, sold to other people, lots four, five, and six. They're, they're waiting for the lot releases in order to do their construction work.
What is the board's, uh?
Well, he's asking for four out of the.
So there'll be what, three lots left after we?
Eight, four, just eight altogether.
Oh, eight, so it'll be five.
So one is already gone, and then, right?
Three, three are sold, lots four, five, and six have been transferred to other people.
So, so transfer to other people, that means that, like, you're, they're just gonna build whatever they want.
Yes, they have their own builders.
I got you.
Uh, I just did that to get some more seed money, to make sure that I had the money to finish the road when the economy all collapsed, when it collapses.
Okay, uh, what is the board's feeling on this?
But to answer Mr. Scully's question, the three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar bond is in place.
I understand, I'm not a proponent of.
No, I understand, you've, you've made that.
I've let that be known.
Only twelve times.
I just wanna want you to think you're gonna get all lots done without, with that performance bond and not paving this freaking street. And it's even more important to me now that you are selling lots.
To other people.
To other people without the complete access, okay, it's just a binded access at this point.
That, but I'm going by your subdivision bylaws. I mean, that's, that's what the subdivision bylaws allow.
Posted enough money to secure the road.
Right.
Right.
Right, we all.
No, I understand.
Well, I have done work since then.
Which is great.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying that three twenty-four is now probably down to two seventy-five.
Unfortunately, I've been on this board for too long to know that performance bonds have caused this town nothing but havoc.
I, I understand that, but that's the last century you're talking about, not this, you haven't done a subdivision, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I know, but I, to, to Rich's point is, you, you, you've sold three lots to three different builders and.
No, three different individuals.
Three individuals, sorry, three different individuals.
Yes, that's correct.
Three different individual.
They're gonna expect they wanted their road finished.
And they're gonna, and we're gonna say, sorry, you can't, we can't release that because the road is not finished. They're gonna expect to move in there and stuff like that and when the road is not finished.
Yeah, then they go see that gentleman right there.
I know.
If you don't come see us, do go see him.
Oh, it's in the past before, that's what's happened, where.
But, but, that's, you're going back twenty years ago.
I know, I, I know. I'm wishing you all a success in the world, I just want you to be, from my opinion, that keep working, keep doing what you're doing. Don't worry about the concrete trucks wrecking the final pavement, because those people, I don't know when they're gonna build their houses, but they're gonna have concrete.
All right, so you're saying I can put the co- the final pavement in and you don't care what happens to the road?
You could have put it on yesterday.
And you don't care what happens to the road?
Oh, yeah, if the road goes belly up before the town accepts it, you'll be fixing it.
Anyway, all right, all right, all right, all right.
A lot of other towns that they, 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 they put their, they put their roads in prior to building, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
I, 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 there's not a town in the Commonwealth that does that.
That's not true.
Spencer does that.
Suesby does it.
You have to have a completed road before you.
Suesby does it.
Good for them.
They do.
Anybody wanna make a motion in terms of the lot release?
Is that thing filled out all the way that you need it?
According to Tony.
I don't understand why there's the twenty fourteen date in there, somebody shed some light on that.
That was when the subdivision was originally approved? They require the, uh, date of approval plus the book and page.
Yeah.
On that form, and that's when it was originally approved. I've been waiting nine years to do the road, yes, to answer your question.
Yeah.
Hey, you're sorry.
So you're looking for three lots released, yeah, sorry, four, yeah, I, I, I don't have a problem with releasing lots, we still have.
Four, four. Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
The motion is, I don't have a problem.
Well, we're releasing the, the motion to release the four lots.
You wanna make that sound like a motion?
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
I make a motion, we release the four lots on Kathy's Way subdivision.
Should you put the, should you.
Lots, lots, what?
Four, five, six.
Lots, four, five, six, and seven.
Four, five, six, and seven.
All right, motion by Jeff, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Roger, any more discussion? I'll call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously, thank you. And now we need like five of us to sign it, right?
Yes, yes.
Just send it down the line.
Yeah.
What I will do is, um, Mary is not here today, as we know.
There's no candy.
So for, uh, she will process that and authorize it.
Okay.
And in the morning, then myself and Mary will give you a call.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have to sign two, or is it just an extra copy?
I'm just one.
All right, old business.
Thank you so much, have a good evening.
Thank you, good luck to you.
Thanks, Connor.
Thank you so much.
Uh, update regarding comprehensive permit application for ninety-eight Main Street. Tony, anything on that?
Yes, so at the last meeting, it was requested an update of the comprehensive permits, um, and truly there, there is, um. Seven twenty-two Main Street was a, um, an application that was before the ZBA, almost a year ago. Um, the town invoked, uh, the ZBA invoked Safe Harbor, um, because the ZBA believe that we meet our calculations for, um, for land area as it relates to affordable, um, properties in town through the housing inventory list, okay? In essence, the, um, the appeal, it goes to the Housing Appeals Court. Nothing has changed, Housing Appeals Committee, I apologize, nothing has changed. When I do get an update, um, I'll gladly provide this board an update, but since then, um, we're almost going a year now, we have not, uh, heard back yet from the HAC, so. The other application, um, was, um, a smaller project, um, on, on Main Street, and the applicant came before the Board of Selectmen looking for a, um, it was a lip application, a friendly forty B. It's forty B, uh, it's a comprehensive permit, but the term friendly is a term that is just, it's not a legal term, it's not in the statute, but in essence, just a highlighted process that the applicant would willingly go before the Board of Selectmen and get their guidance, their.
This is the one behind big eyes, right?
No, not couple.
This is the one.
Whatever it's called, yeah, whatever, yeah.
What's it called now?
Half-bait.
Half-bait.
Yes, yes.
What was the, what, what was the origin?
Yep, yep. So, so, no, no, it's fine, so, um, the, um, the Board of Selectmen at the time held off from endorsing the, um, or signing off on, on that application. Um, there were some comments also from the Army Corps, it's within the, I think it's called the five oh four line.
Yep.
Um, since that point, and now we're going back months ago, um, there hasn't been any submission for a traditional comprehensive permit before the ZBA, so as far as I'm concerned, there's, there's, um, no, nothing has moved forward on that.
Kinda dead.
Okay, it's dead, in essence, yes. So all we have to look at now is that seven twenty-two Main, which is before the Housing Appeals Committee, like I said, and, uh.
That's the one up by Walmart.
Yep.
Correct, correct, and, um, just, you know, please trust, when I do have an update, um, I'll definitely share with this board. Certainly may hear it from ZBA first, because they, they are the, the reviewers on the comprehensive permit, but I'll certainly share with this board as well.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah, no problem.
So what about four ninety-eight Main Street?
Sure, sure, so after the last meeting, um, I did reach out to the, um, to the applicant and, um, reminded them that the clock is ticking. About already six months into their approval, and no work has been done, and, um, they assured me that they would be following up, um, in the next few weeks to pull their permits, so we'll be following up, um, with them very soon.
Correct. Excellent.
So can we get an update maybe on a September twenty-sixth meeting, so that's like a month?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
So then, is Mister, is Patrick here, the building inspector? Oh, I think he is, come on up.
Hiding in the corner.
So, uh, Tony told me that Patrick is here to talk about the, uh, the in-law apartments, right?
Correct.
Did you wanna slide off, or?
Sure. The, um, I was looking for my notes.
So, Commissioner Dolgren and I have been, we work closely, um, I mean, we work closely, we share the same office space in, in our more recent discussions about, um, in-law apartments, um, we were contemplating some, a suggestion for the board to consider. Where we have even, for example, tonight, whereas all the work is, if you will, interior, um, questions sometimes whether there is a need to come before this board for, for review where all work is interior. And, um, and what does that mean, and, and Commissioner Dolgren will, will, will discuss how, how it fits in, in his realm under building code, but, but also, you know, from our realm thinking about the example of, of, not even today, but the other projects we've done recently, and we have another one in the queue. What I see behind the counter is folks that come in and request to, um, to have an in-law apartment, and it requires a special permit, we go through the process. Rightfully so, notify the abutters, after advertise, twenty-day appeal period, fourteen days to record the decision. We're about two and a half, three months out before family member can move in or whatnot, so. The, the goal here is, you know, is there a way that perhaps we can streamline the permitting process but not lose sight of the, the oversight? And then where does that fall, because certainly, we all agree, think that life safety is, is key, consistently with the zoning is important as well. But we are, we have been seeing more and more interior, um, projects, you know, where the exterior may not change at all, right? And so we thought that would be worth, um, respectfully request this board's, um, guidance on it, and it's just a thought that we, we, um, we had and since last two years, say we've had about a dozen or so in-laws, now there's variations, we know, additions and so on. But, uh, wanted to get the board's, you know, guidance and take on it. Do see it as, you know, we know the, the bylaw itself, regardless, um, which channel, if we decide to change it, um, it does increase housing opportunities. And it does promote independent living, too. And, um, I think it's two really important, um, in my opinion, two really important, um, pieces that certainly fall well within, you know, the, the master plan, I would say, and just, uh, you know, general best practices and, and, and planning, because yes, you know, there's a housing need. And also something we don't talk enough about, I think, in, in my opinion, is the, how beneficial it is to have family members living, you know, independently in the same household. You heard the story tonight, it was very fitting, so, so, you know, we see that two and a half, three months as, um, as an opportunity where maybe we can streamline that, so I just wanted to introduce it, and, and if I may, turn up to Commissioner Dolgren to really talk about the meat of this.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. So, we get applicants come in with a building permit to add additional living space, in-law apartment in their basement or another part of the house. We have to turn around and say, you need a special permit, go through the planning board, through that process, and, uh, the, the first question they ask is, how long is that gonna take? My mother needs to move in, she's got, you know, she's leaving rehab, um, you know, two or three weeks from now. Well, I have to tell them two to three months for the special permit process, and then after that is approved, you have to submit a building permit that can take up to thirty days to, to issue the building permit on top of that. So not only the two and a half, it could be like three and a half months by the time the whole process is completed, and they actually have a permit, and then they have to start to build or remodel, or add the kitchen, add a cabinet, whatever, kitchen cabinets, whatever they need to do. So basically, in a nutshell, we wanna be able to end zoning, change zoning, and remove that process of requiring a special permit through the planning board, and then it would be just a building permit, if it's all interior work on a single-family residential home, that is the goal.
Can I just play devil's advocate for one minute?
Sure, sure.
So you have someone comes before, they come in and say, geez, I wanna redo my, I'm gonna redo my downstairs, that, that's what they tell you, they don't tell you it's gonna be an in-law apartment.
Happens all the time, correct.
Yeah, right, they don't tell you it's gonna be an in-law apartment, so we lose that home owner occupied thing, because next you know it, they're renting out that space to whatever, you know, or renting, you know, 'cause.
That's illegal.
I know, but.
It's illegal, yeah.
Okay, so as long as they, you know, most, most people are, yeah, I'm gonna renovate my downstairs for my mother and that, that, that's, and I have no problem, like I said, this, this, it's a, it's a great thing, it's an easy to do, I have no problem, it shouldn't be a special permit, they're just, everything's inside, they're not changing the footprint of the house whatsoever. I'm just more concerned about the people, right, it is illegal.
It's illegal, but the trigger is, is usually like a stove, a kitchen, a kitchenette, that's usually the, usually the trigger, they say in-law apartment. I really wanna get rid of the word in-law.
Yeah.
And make an additional living space.
Well, we also got an accessory, accessory apartment.
It's separate.
Yeah.
Accessory is separate.
And that still would go through special permit?
That would still go through special permit.
I thought we'd get rid of all that, I thought we just followed an accessory apartment, we didn't do that, I thought we did.
Because accessory is allowed in GB and Village Business District, so that would still go through the special permit process, this is for single-family residential home.
Again, the key thing is that the owner has to occupy.
Correct, there's restrictions, there's still restrictions, right.
No separate metering and.
No metering, no mailbox, no gas, extra gas meters.
No separate address.
Yeah.
No separate address, no two electrical meters, which is consistent with a single-family home. You know, the, the mother and father wanna give their keys to their, to their kids and say, hey, we're gonna go downstairs, here's, here's the keys to the house, we're downstairs, you guys upstairs.
So the red flag is when somebody says, well, I'm putting a kitchen in my basement.
Well, that's where, where some of the law, some of the laws, some of the towns, they kinda draw the line when you add another kitchen, but there's nothing out there that says anybody can have two kitchens in their home, there's nothing.
Well, Ms. Davis was adding a kitchen today, and I mean, on a split level, you know.
And I, I have a Benjro House done some inspections there for some otherization.
Split levels, you can easily add a, a kitchen in there, so.
And she, she needs, she needs to move down, her son wants to move in.
That's a great.
And you're gonna get another one, probably the next meeting, the Stone, the Stone family will be coming in also for their special permit, same situation where their mother has to move in, she's coming from the hospital, but she has to go through the same process.
So is there a, a building permit for an accessory, is it an apartment or?
Yeah.
Accessory apartment?
Yeah, and, and.
That you would be comfortable with if it meets this criteria, this criteria, this criteria, and if there's any gray, you just say, I gotta refer this for a special permit?
No, if this, no, for accessory, accessory apartment has to go through the process, for, for an in-law, single-family, I wanna change it to additional living space. So if I have a ranch, say a ranch, and I wanna add a kitchen, a bathroom, and a bedroom downstairs for my mother, I would go apply for a building permit, have a set of.
For additional living space.
Additional living space.
Yes, yeah, that makes sense.
And if it meets the criteria.
It's a criteria, here's the, here's the permit.
Living space, you give it a thumbs up, and that's it, they're done.
They, they, they got their building permit.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
What we've found out over the years is that, uh, the reason they come through us is kind of to regulate how big they, they make their, their addition for.
Yeah, we could do restrictions on that also, though.
Yeah. In-law apartment.
Right.
I mean, a raised ranch.
Certain size, it could not, what was it?
Eight hundred square feet, yeah, eight hundred square feet, yeah, but we've seen people try to double the size of their house and, yeah.
They put a, they put a car garage underneath the, uh.
Yeah, that's not living, yeah, yeah.
But this one's any existing space where you're not adding.
Right, you're not changing the footprint at all.
We're not changing the footprint, right.
Yeah, this is different. You, you reviewed, the, the woman that was here tonight that wants to kindly.
I like his.
Next, Tony. You, you looked at the parking situation, you signed off on that.
Just got plenty of parking.
You have a proposed form that you'd like to work with?
It would be a building permit, application.
But the name would be additional living space instead of in-law, yeah, I like. But the name would be additional living space instead of in-law, yeah, I like, I like just a whole new kind of subsection, subsection of that building.
In chapter three, end of zoning.
Yeah.
So I just have a question, so do you know, like, do other towns do the in-law or do they, do the addition, you know, do they change it?
Believe it or not, a lot of towns don't even allow in-laws. Oxford is very, very open and it's, it's actually a great thing. I dealt with this in another community when I worked in the city of Marlboro, they don't have in-law. They use something similar to this, additional living space, they don't even allow it, so.
They don't allow, like, that you couldn't, so Ms. Davis would have gotten denied.
She would have gotten denied. We would drive and we see the real estate sign, home for sale, and say, in-law apartment, we would stop and it would be illegal, yeah.
Wow.
It's pretty tough.
Sounds kind of like a no-brainer.
Yeah, I mean, there's enough gates on this with the metering, you're not adding external, extra doors or, you know, anything else to the property. It's all just what you got, you're just reconfiguring the inside.
It's still going to go through border health, still going to go through.
Do we do that anyways, number of bedrooms, title five?
Do we have time to put this together for the next meeting? Probably not.
Yeah.
Town meeting?
Yeah.
Get it on the warrant.
So, so if the board wished to give a favorable on this, we would issue memo out tomorrow. Given the timeline, if the board is comfortable, we could at least, you know, we would be awaiting a referral back from the Board of Select, in which they would meet the end of this month. With all the timelines in place, if the board's willing to, we could place hold a public hearing for the 26th of September, which will put us right on schedule for a town meeting.
Anybody want to make that motion?
I, I don't know, I'm trying to wrap my head around this. So you're looking at a split, for example, right? So you're putting your, let's still call it in-law apartment. Have you talked, like, with the EMS folks and, you know, because my concern there would be like a safety thing. All right, then they only have one method of entrance egress. And typically, you know, that's kind of a big thing with the fire department, right?
So we follow the building code, so every bedroom needs to have an emergency exit. If it's a window or if it's below grade, a window well, and they'll have their exit, which is the common space to go through the house, clear access through the home. So if there was a bedroom down near basement, that would need to have an egress window escape, regardless, if it was an in-law or not. That's through the building code.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I can't picture my 78-year-old mother crawling out a window.
But she has the opportunity to, if she needed to.
So what is the, what does the board want to do?
To make a mo, so are we going to continue?
No, no, no.
Do you want to make?
We're going to approve it?
Make the motion to put it on the warrant.
Put it on the wa, yeah, we want to get.
Don't we, don't we have to discuss it at this September?
We have to have a public hearing, right?
Public hearing, correct. So the, the date of public hearing would be September 26th.
All right, I'll make a motion.
At 7:10, yes.
I'll make a motion that we put this on for a public hearing on September 26th at 7:10.
I'll second that. Motion by Chris, seconded by Jeff, any more discussion? Call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Would this go to legal too?
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
The next.
If you give me 10 seconds, let me just see if I can.
All right, go.
Thank you.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Craig, can I just ask a question about something that we already talked about?
498 Main Street. We can hold this up a few.
Sorry, the 498 Main Street, wasn't there a question of whether they were in compliance of the number of vehicles?
Yeah, that was, that's what I, I had brought that up, it seemed like there was a lot of vehicles on that lot.
It is.
But that's, that's the selectman's purview, right?
Yeah, they issued it.
That's tied to their license, but also the site plan too. I'm just going off the top of my head, which is dangerous, but I thought it was like 40 feet.
I thought it was 15, I thought it was 15, we all have different numbers.
I thought it was like 35.
There's a lot of vehicles on that lot.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And they're kind of everywhere too, not like the plan showed it.
It's not striped or anything, they're splat.
Needs to be striped, the stone-mortared detention area needs to be put in place, they need to put in the plumbing work, fencing, dumpster.
I think I've seen cars down there.
So how long do they have to, like that?
So that was a, they have a year. And now we did tie the, or the Board of Selectmen did tie the, they incorporated, okay, the, the plan that was reviewed by this board, the plan of record into their decision. So they have to come before the Board of Selectmen for a renewal later this year. So they, they are unnoticed that it's, that they have to get started and complete their work. They haven't started anything yet, other than operate.
They haven't taken their permits yet?
They're in the process of pulling their permits, just, we'd anticipate they would pull them within the next week or two.
Now, they can't, can they pull the permit before they do everything we told them they had to do?
Well, they have to pull permit, for example, for the plumbing, and there's some excavation, I believe, in the interior and the exterior that will have to be completed.
Oh, that, that's a permit you talked about.
But the striping, they don't need to pull the permit for that, they just need to do it. Exactly, exactly, in a nutshell, in a nutshell.
That's the only thing they were really after.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
But not to lose sight of the point, though, that that permit, to your point, is tied to our, our, our plan. And please trust, you know, come December, that if the board is so willing, I would certainly provide a comment letter to the Board of Selectmen to inform them that the applicant hasn't been in, in compliance with this board's approval. So we will closely, you know, monitor that.
Excellent.
So I don't see it on the deck here, but everyone does have a copy of the, of the zoning map with the proposed change. And I certainly, this is one of those where. It is a recommendation in the, in the master plan, it was section 7.5, it's a series of recommendations when it came to, to map changes. I think it was a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago. For example, we discussed the, the recommendation of residential to light industrial down by IPG in that area. And there was not an appetite of the board at that time to do that. But there was also, in review, there was a recommendation to consider extending the VB district into that corridor of, from Sutton Avenue to 395. The, the map that you have before you shows that it's existing primarily GB with some, some residential. Current conditions today, as you folks know, on that stretch of Sutton Avenue, there are several properties that are currently for, for sale and have been on the market for quite some time. And zoning of GB, the feedback that I've at least been getting is there is some appetite to look at mixed-use residential commercial. VB does call it out conveniently, the option to have residential, actually, the whole, the whole, the whole menu of residential uses are allowed in some variation, shape or form in the VB. So thinking about that, thinking about what was recommended in the master plan, again, just wanted to throw this to the, to the board's opinion. The plan itself that you have where you identify that stretch of parcels along Sutton Avenue to 395, it was noted in the master plan, it's integral part of the downtown core. And given the current situation of vacant properties along that gateway, VB does provide, Village Business does provide opportunities for creative reuse while safeguarding the traditional character. The.
What does that do to the businesses that are there?
Yes, yes, I was just going to get to that. So, so obviously with any zone change, the existing businesses would still be able to operate and function. Any future, you know, extension, addition, whatnot, may require them to go to, would require them to go to the, to the ZBA. But there's many ways we can also, many ways, there's a couple of ways we can also look at this map too. We could go from Sutton Avenue straight to 395 or, or not and cover perhaps where the, maybe where Hometown Bank is, stop right there, just prior to that. I think it's 25 Sutton Ave, it's the large parcel that's vacant, maybe extend that VB arm just to there. That's, that's an option, that's not spot zoning either, that's, we're talking about an extension of, of the VB. The, I'll give you an example too, the, pardon me, the, I believe it was an optometrist, optomologist office, right?
Yeah.
So currently that is within, there's a commercial use there and there's a, the property owner has at least expressed interest to convert that to, to a residential use. That, that ground level would not be allowed under the current zoning, but I know the VB would allow that flexibility. 25 Sutton Avenue is currently vacant and there's a two-level.
Is that on the north side?
That is.
Is that the white building there?
Is that the green one?
That's the white building on the, the optometrist, the white building on the corner of. Park Street?
Yeah, where the crossing.
Where the truck.
Where the crossing, duck and donuts.
Not at the corner of Park Street.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's residential, yeah.
The Oxford Vision Center.
Could I recommend just going, how many feet you did on the, on the.
Going a little bit.
One side of Sutton Avenue, you do on the other side of Sutton Avenue when they can apply for us.
Yeah.
All those lots will have some VB in them, even the GB district will still be there.
Sure.
Yeah.
So similar to how we did the.
Yeah, we just, we just pushed it back a little, yeah, yeah. And again, you're just opening up more opportunities for other uses of that area, which is.
That covers all the basic houses that are there that could be expanded to have that type of commercial on the side, residential above.
Even like, like, so even like a lawyer's office, something like that, or, you know, accountant's office.
And we were kind of kicking around, well, do we look at GB, for example? And in the GB, do we allow the, the mixed-use option there? But we felt that that could be a real challenge because we would need more time to look at the implications of that townwide.
If, if Robbins.
This might be more prescriptive.
If Robbins decided to close, that land would be for sale. Next, they'd have a sliver of their front yard as VB.
Yeah, and then by.
They could make it all VB and put in a good size building with commercial down below and residence upstairs. You know, I'm all for the residence upstairs, you know, I have no problem with that, in fact, that, that helps us with that housing.
It's a great access to the highway and stuff like that.
Just to your point, though, isn't the business where the eye doctor was, I mean, that was a business and a tenant upstairs?
I think so.
Yeah, so what's the change?
So in that one, the, so the issue was that the residential was there prior to the zone change, the existing zone change, I thought. This is.
All those places on the beginning of the street.
Yeah, there's still a couple houses on that thing, there's still a couple, two.
Yeah, and then the, the mechanism of the, the flexibility of this board to determine frontage, right, was another important thing because we know that where those houses are, there's some undersized lots and.
Oh, yeah. There's not much you could do for packing, you know.
The Village Business, I think, is more helpful for, for everybody on all sides. And I, and I appreciate the, the idea of just doing the measurement by, let's say, several feet within the parcel. Because then that's another important safeguard, because it would require a special permit from the board to flip the zoning there, which is good. Can all be done in the same hearing, if you will. So, so that's, that's all, that's all that we were looking at. And I think it could really be helpful to, to get redevelopment along that corridor. And still appreciates the design standards that this, you know, board went through when you adopted the VB. And I think would really help out in the long run.
Correct.
So would we hold like a public hearing similar to the accessory?
Yep, yep.
Yes, yes, I would recommend the same date, just five minutes later.
I'm on a roll, so I'll make, I'll make the motion. So I'll make a motion to hold a public hearing on September 26th at 7:15.
I'll second that. Motion by Chris, seconded by Jeff, any discussion? All those in favor, I'll call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Carried unanimously.
So Tony, you made those changes of, oh, a few feet back.
Yes, yes, we'll, we'll modify it and, and again, even at public hearing, and as you folks think about this, moving forward, we can always make further changes. Board has a lot of flexibility.
And then this would go to town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would also, I like to notify, especially when we're doing the map change, notify the property owners out of courtesy. You know, even though we're covered under state law, just, just a courtesy.
Okay, so we did the 36 Sullivan Boulevard, right?
Yep.
Yes.
You want to do the planning director or do you want to?
That, in a nutshell, under the new business was kind of covering the, the report that I had thus far. So, but would welcome if the board has anything else or anything you'd want to talk about the next meeting.
We just brought this up to Tony at the beginning when we were talking prior to the meeting. Subdivision rules and regs, as we go ahead and we're working to modify those. I'd like TPW opinion of the roadway standards we're using for subdivisions and see if they should be beefed up based upon the largeness of trucks these days or whatever so that they will withstand the loads appropriately, just to make sure that we're having the developers put a road down there that's as good as the town can get. That'll support today's activities that go on these trucks.
I think our regulations, industrial roads are more beefed up than residential roads, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't know, I just asked.
Yeah, I don't even, yeah.
I just asked Tony to have it reviewed.
Yeah.
I mean, we, I'm just seeing roads getting destroyed.
I mean, I kind of look at what happens on Sutton Ave, like, you know, Sutton Ave, those big divots, it's been changed, they finally fixed it, but that was all from heavy truck, truck use, when the big divots right, right at the lights on Sutton Ave. You mean, heading down? Coming off the highway, coming into the center of town, yeah, there was big rocks, so that was all from. Could have been bad construction too. But, but, yeah, but as I was just saying, that's. I remember they paved that and it was snowing out the day they paved that whole intersection. But, I mean, but that's all from heavy, you know, it's the same thing, clear button roads, same thing with those trucks, those laying gravel coming off that thing, it was a mess.
Yeah.
You know, and depending on what the usage of the road is.
I just wanted to have a look at that, make sure we're having the roads designed appropriately for today's vehicles that can go on a, go on residential street, i.e. school buses and trash trucks, garbage trucks. The other thing I asked Tony about was to improve the, fix the column errors on the zoning, zoning bylaw. I don't want another display that someone had up there showing the table that the things are out of, they're out of alignment from top to bottom.
Yes, as I say, I'll follow up with the town clerk.
Are you talking about like formatting?
Formatting, there's a lot of formatting.
Yeah, it was bad, yeah, yeah.
You saw the guy was critical of it, he said, what is it? Special permit, it's a dash, the hashes are right against the words instead of being.
Yeah, it was hard to read.
All right. Yeah, so I'll follow up with the town clerk on.
Fire up that Microsoft Word document.
Start hitting tab.
Anything else?
Anything else, Tony? Anybody else? I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Chris to adjourn, seconded by Roger. All those in favor, I vote aye.
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 Aye.